I'm going to call the meeting to order at this point. Jill, can you take attendance?
Inland, Alan Ayers.
Here.
Kimberly Christensen.
Here.
Arthur Christensen.
Here.
Jim Mark.
Here.
Tony Vaticchio.
Here.
Jan Schambohn.
Here.
Sarah Smith.
Here.
Deborah Holgren. Tim Moore.
Here.
Morgan Donaldson.
Here.
Before we get into anything, I just want to welcome Alan. This is his first meeting. He was just recently elected as a representative from Wellington. So, welcome to the board, Alan. You're in for all sorts of fun. But, we always start our own meetings with an opportunity for the public to address the board. Is there anybody out there that would like to address the board? Has anything that they would like to say? I think there's at least one person that might want to. Maybe not want to, but she would.
Hi, I'm Charlotte Christensen. I'm a junior. And I was just, I want to talk to you guys about the bathroom policy. So, this policy was...
Can I interrupt just for a second? Is the mic on? Can you speak into it, see if it's on?
Oh, no.
No? Okay. Because it's hard to hear.
Just talk really loud.
Just yell at them.
Okay. So, my name's Charlotte Christensen, and I'm a junior. And I want to talk to you guys about the bathroom initiative. So, this initiative says that students aren't allowed to use the bathroom in the first or last 10 minutes of class. At the beginning of the year, it was presented by the teachers as a policy, but I've come to know that it's actually a practice, not a policy. And the main reason for this initiative to be in place is to prevent gathering and vaping in the bathrooms. So, I found this concerning at the beginning of the year. Because in the past, all of my teachers have, like, respected each student's, like, needs to use the bathroom and stuff like that. But now, kids have to ask, and they have to be told no. Which just doesn't really stand for what E O does. So, that just kind of poses a question, like, why are we teaching young adults that they don't have the talk about with their own bodies? So, this actually bothered me so much that when given the opportunity, I did a study on it in psychology. So, I surveyed my classroom. And I found that eighty-six percent of kids found that it was, like, unnecessary to prevent bathroom use in the first place. And that fifty-eight percent of kids said that they would rather use the bathroom in the first or last 10 minutes of class, like, not the middle of the class. Because they found that, they thought that if they used the bathroom in the middle of the class, which the policy forces you to do, that they would miss instruction and content. And then, lastly, I found that, I asked if they think it strains their student relationship, their student-teacher relationship, and I found that half the students said it did. Which, I mean, just one student saying that it negatively affects their relationship isn't good. So, half students saying that, it's definitely not good. So, also for this psych study, I had to pose, like, possible solutions. So, one solution would just be to get rid of the policy, because it seems to be doing more harm than good. The second solution, if we found that we needed to have it in place, would be to modify it so that it's only implemented for kids that, like, need to have restricted bathroom accommodations. So, that would be only the kids that are vaping in the bathroom, or congregating, that needed to be restricted, not the whole school for that specific group of kids. So, yeah. That was it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wasn't so bad, was it? Good. We can move right on now into committee reports, and we can start with personnel.
So, personnel, we have been meeting through administrative, for administrative negotiations, and we will be presenting a redline copy of the union agreement at non-meeting after this meeting. So, if members want to stick around and take a look at that document, that would be great.
How about policy?
Policy, Matt, the majority of our meeting, we spent developing questions for the survey that was going to go out, that actually did go out this week, I believe, to the teachers to see how the pilot program's going. We also talked very briefly about the switch to the total point system of grading. And the policy committee requested that there be more communication to parents about this change, as it's a departure from how half the faculty used to grade with points and half used to grade more traditionally. So, that's been switched now to total point grading. So, we did ask for more communication to parents and students about how that is working. And then, we did, we briefly touched upon the current gifts and requests policy. That's something we're just going to have to discuss later, but we did touch upon it. And then, we set a date for the next meeting, which is November thirteenth at six.
Thank you, Kim. Curriculum?
Curriculum did not meet.
Did not meet. Building.
Building, Matt, just before this. Not a lot of new agenda items. Number that have been going on for some time. Turf installations and its final stages of punch list resolution. So, a little bit of holdback in proportion to the few items that got to get resolved. So, some of that happened. Continuing to discuss and brainstorm, find locations for our starting depot programs. Best decisions, not a lot of great options there that are sort of financially and geographically viable, but trying to keep our eye open. We have, you know, sort of, we have an ongoing list of opportunities we're working through. And then, lastly, but the biggest thing was, we received, we'll call it, mean campus portion of the indoor air quality report, all seven hundred and some pages yesterday. With your really high level, we'll be mapping out how we go about addressing the recommendations and findings from, you know, from that. And whether they be, you know, in-house work, contracted work, you know, this year, next year, budget versus grant, lots of ways to slice and dice that as we digest and work through that. Dennis is going to be taking the lead as to getting us a start on how to digest that and use it by itself. That was our primary agenda for this week.
Thanks, Steve.
No, you didn't.
I guess I didn't want to hear it.
I guess, yeah.
You were the one to hear.
Go back to finance, I'm sorry.
Okay, so today, on the consent agenda, the board is receiving a preliminary financial statement. So, the subcommittee voted to recommend that the full board receive the finances report. I guess it must have, but right now, things look fine. The one thing that Amanda pointed out was that there's new state rules in terms of the reimbursement and what we bill at for the special education cost. So, it's fifty-eight percent now, which is down a little bit from what it used to be. But the state is saying that they will make us whole. And so, they've already started to reimburse us at a higher rate in terms of what they will pay us back, I guess.
We talked a little bit about that last year when that was coming down the road. No, if, not really knowing. I've been in contact with the state, with the agricultural folks around, you know, what, who's going to make up the difference between the fifty-eight percent of what we have, what we charged last year? So, we're only allowed to charge fifty-eight percent of what we charged last year. Last year, when we went through our budget cycle, we talked a little bit about the fact that we were keeping that amount, the budgeted amount, the same, because we still, at that point, didn't have a lot of information from the state. According to Amanda, because we were a little skeptical about whether or not we could make whole, the state is promising that they would make us whole for that amount. And the ag, the ag grant that we get also supplements that amount. So, when we look at an ag student, their tuition is, you know, it used to be fifty-eight, half paid by the sending town and half paid by the ag grant. Now, we can only charge the sending town fifty-eight percent of that roughly sixty-three, sixty-four hundred dollars that the town paid. This applies to magnet schools as well. So, we benefit on magnet school end, where we're only responsible for paying fifty-eight percent of what we previously paid. So, Amanda just kind of went through to show that we are only charging our districts that fifty-eight percent. And what appears to be being received
Right.
from the state seems to be making that whole. So, that is good news.
And then, I think the only other thing to point out is that our budget document this year is going to look a little bit different because of, I guess, we're using that county package clear those. And so, we're going to try their budget manual this year. So, that's what it's worth.
We're forward to feedback for people who have looked at the extremely large budget books that we've had, I think, for a really long time.
Okay. Anything else? And, P D Tech?
We did not meet, but I wanted to report that I attended last week the meet and greet for the parents for racial justice group. Although, Kim, was it about sixty people? Yeah, so, it seemed, it was a chance for new families with new students coming into the school. Met with some of the families that have been here for a while. It's really offering support. And we went through, there was report from the Racial Justice Academy, the training of teacher cohorts addressing anti-racism issues in the school. Lou and Sharon and I spoke, and parent representatives spoke. It was, and Coach Kelly spoke. It was, I think, a really good meeting. I, you know, met a lot of the, a lot of the new families, met some of the people we've known for a long time. And it was, I think, a really positive meeting. People felt there was really, I think it was a recognition that we have a long way to go, but we're making, we are making progress in becoming an anti-racist school. We understand it's going to go on. Not going to be able to declare victory. It's going to be a continuing effort. But I was glad to attend, and...
Okay. Next, Tom.
Do you have new families that you met from previous years?
I met some, you know, there was returning families. There was, I think there was even some represented families that no longer have students in the school. But, and met some of the, of the new families coming in who have students, black students or students of color. So, it was an opportunity for them to get introduced to the group and to what's going on at E O Smith.
So, it's on the thirtieth?
It's on the thirtieth, yep.
And we have our student reports. Who's going to go first? Fabio, Faith, Hillary? Which one of you is going to be first up?
I'll go first.
Okay.
Okay, so, I'd like to report on some of the fall sports that have been going on, to start with. Girl soccer, boy soccer, girls volleyball, and field hockey. We're on the seventh seed in the first round, which is a tough loss, but maybe next year. And then, another thing I wanted to report on is that I gathered from other students is that from, like, the sandwich bar in the cafeteria, students have been finding, like, bugs in their food. I myself have been one of those students. And I have pictures if anyone wants to see them. There have been reports of bugs in the schools. And then, when brought to the lunch lady's attention, they sort of almost like, I wouldn't want to say brush it off, but then just provide like another medium, like, and there's been countless reports of them.
Well, hi, my name is Fabio. I'm a junior at E O Smith High School. To start off, I wanted to talk about, I want to bounce off on base topic about lunch. Again, the quality of the lunch recently has been great. Using bamboo for our utensils have been great. And I think it's been a huge success for the entire school in order to make it more friendly towards the environment. But, in terms of the quality and how, in terms of, let's say, the occasion of the bugs, yesterday, there was a situation with a fellow student in front of mine that there was a worm found inside their sandwich. I'm sure that it's been reported, but I feel that it's an issue that could be severely, like, hazardous for the health of the student and for other, and it could possibly risk the health of others too, if the worm or other things have been in contact with different foods or different areas of nutrition within the cafeteria. Initially, I would like to talk about attitudes post-election. I think how we have, we've approached attitudes and how we look to take care of student safety after the election was great. I think it was very successful, as reported by other students. I think that compared to other years, we've been able to really take care of and manage how the environment of E O Smith has been compared to other years. But I would say that it wasn't completely perfect, but I think it was, it was excellent. It was excellent. I feel that, of course, people had their own opinions. That's totally fair. But there were some flaws within it. People were bringing in flags. And in some way, it could be seen that they wanted to express their, like, in the way victory in some way of, like, you know, I wouldn't say aggression, but some way of a more hostile form through trying to take pictures with certain people that wouldn't really appreciate the display of a candidate being shown. But, yeah. And then, to bounce off on another base topics, I think funding within sports has been great. I think that really this year has been seen as a huge success for all sports, for most sports at least. That funding has really helped us. Me, myself, I'm part of the boy soccer team, and I felt a really huge impact with how much support we've gotten. I mean, I've been part of the soccer team for two years now. And seeing this year compared to last year and how much support from not only the staff, but from parents we've gotten, I think that it's been a huge help. And I felt that it's really made an impact on the team and how we react as a community as a whole. And I think that this year at E O, I felt a greater sense of community than last year. And I, and I, in other use, as a matter of fact, because I feel like we've really built a community in general. So, yeah.
I don't got much to say.
There's always one.
I just got two little things. First of all, there is a bank concert next Wednesday. Seven. I don't watch, you know, I think it's at seven. I have no idea. And then, second, most seniors have applied to college. So, I think that it's kind of, things are chilling out in school a little bit because of that. Because a lot of seniors, the stress has come off. But, I think Gracey has some things to say, or maybe me.
Well, I just wanted to mention, like, another really big thing that happened in the last month was we went to Indiana for nationals. I was part of that group, actually, with animal science. And it was like, it was an amazing experience. It was so fun all around. We played silver, which is really, a really great accomplishment. Sorry, this is our first year with the Vet Tech team. Mr. Zora's team plays gold. They always play gold, so that was a surprise. But, yeah, I think he did really good. It was just overall such a great experience, so.
Good. Thank you, guys. Before we get to the superintendent's report, Alan, I want to come back to you because normally, I would, I just wasn't thinking about it. Give you an opportunity just to introduce yourself to the board. We, I congratulate you and glad that you're here, but we don't really know you. So, just, you know, and I think I had warned you that I might do that, so.
Oh, so, I'm Alan Ayers. I am a parent of two children. I have a freshman soccer player here at E O Smith and a sixth-grade student athlete at Hall School. That'll be here too. So, that's really important for me to make some sort of impact, you know, where they are. I worked twenty years as a bricklayer and laborer when I was younger through my family. I was a stay-at-home dad for four years with my kids when they were younger. And then, I switched careers. I'm now a respiratory therapist at Connecticut Children's. And I'm going in for eleven PM tonight, so that's why I'm wearing this right now. I'm just happy to get involved and help, so.
Again, congratulations. We're glad to have you. Then we can go on to the superintendent's report. I, again, I'm sorry. Normally, when I congratulate a welcome and a member, you do a chance to introduce yourself as well so we know a little bit more about you. So, thank you. Superintendent, three, four?
Yeah, mine is pretty straightforward, so I'm not going to go through too much of it. You can read the ongoing meetings that are in my existence. Negotiation meetings with the Advent Guard and the Union were a big part of this past month, as well as, you know, getting information about the vacant property and things like that. We did, Lou and I worked through goal-setting meetings with all of our department heads and directors integrating and reporting pilot that's going on right now. That was really important to be able to really align and support our leaders as they're leading each of their departments in the work that needs to be done to ensure as much consistency as possible between all of the components of that policy pilot. So, they've been really important meetings for us. People have been really great. Survey went out. Preliminary data is coming back, which we haven't taken a look at yet, but it looks promising. We do have an IT staff, or an IT staff position, and work is being done to fill that position. Unbelievable conversations with the superintendents from Union and Eastford. So, the Union School District Board voted to, to, I wanted to say appoint, but to declare E O Smith as their designated school. So, we're in the process of working through the negotiation with Union. Eastford is in a similar situation. They already have a contract with us where their stu, they agree to pay if they have a student or two or several who want to attend E O. So, that contract is in place, but we are not currently their designated school. They are currently going through the process with their board of determining whether or not E O would be their designated school. Both two very small school districts where the number of students that they would send us each year wouldn't necessarily impact our staffing at all. And actually, would, as we look at our tracking for numbers and enrollment numbers, would really help to maintain a higher enrollment for E O. So, unbelievable conversations. We'll be probably bringing that contract to you at the December meeting to take a look at for the Union District. Lou and I are a week from today. We'll be addressing the Eastford Board next week. And then, I included our agenda for the professional development meetings that we had in October, both the full day and the half-day, where for the purpose of kind of showing the opportunities for teachers to have time to coordinate, collaborate, and to create conditions for more consistency across, again, the grading piece, starting with the idea of learning target trackers and then aligning those learning target trackers to their formative assessments and their summative assessments. Important for us, because as we look to our snapshot data and our grading data, one of the things that I'll be reporting and Lou and I will be reporting out to you in December, probably at our retreat, is the review of our snapshot data and a review of the impact that any of the interventions might have had on the increase or decrease of the numbers of Ds and Fs, but also how is it impacting student achievement, As, Bs, Cs? So, we're reporting that data out. So, in order for that data to be as reliable as possible, the teachers being consistent with their practices with learning target trackers and their formative assessments, feeding their summative assessments, is a really critical foundational piece. And they've had a lot of time to, over the course of professional development, to really grapple through that very challenging work of making sure that our learning targets, our standards aligned with their curriculum and that is flowing through. So, I included that. And then, along with that is, you know, what does the instruction look like? So, you see, there are choice opportunities. And I included the description and some of the opportunities that teachers had to take, to participate in presentations of their choice presented by their peers who volunteered to create professional development for their colleagues in areas that fit under our categories of equity, student-centered learning, and social-emotional learning. So, those are the criteria for which they can put forward a proposal to present. And the feedback, when teachers have the opportunity to share their practice with each other, the feedback from those PDs are generally very, very strong and positive. I think we have a lot of collective expertise within the walls of this school and providing them the opportunity to share that is a priority that we have. That is it for me. This last time, because so much of the professional development was focused around some collaboration time to really align some of those structures that they needed to align with, the invite didn't necessarily go out to the board this time. So, that's on me. Next time, as always, we appreciate the board being able to participate in some of those choice presentations. So, one big piece is, Tim Klein was our convocation speaker last, not this August, the August before. Did work with our staff on finding their purpose, as well as helping students find their purpose in the process of teaching and learning. Tim came back, were part, and I think I've mentioned this in previous meeting, but it's worth repeating. We were invited to participate in their study. So, Tim and his colleagues have come back, and they are training a cohort of our teachers who selected for that to be their professional goal, is to train the trainers, where they are receiving pre-professional development. Tim is from Boston College, and his colleague is from Boston College. And so, they're, they are meeting with a group, a cohort of our teachers to train them on how to facilitate belonging conversations with their colleagues, which then folks will be able to facilitate within their classrooms to really create that sense of belonging that I think we're all striving for.
Any questions on the superintendent's report? Go on to the consent agenda. Before we act on that, is there anybody that wants to make any changes, pull anything off from me?
Yes, I want to pull the third item off, the budget preparation schedule.
Okay. Any other changes in the previous meeting minutes? Because I need to extend. You can start extending. Okay. Even as a collective. Oh, you might want to abstain from all of them. Oh, from the entire consent agenda?
Just from the minutes.
Oh, just from the minutes. Right, so the minutes, lectures, I need to abstain from the party group. Okay. Okay, sure, all right, I get it. Sorry. We can take off the minutes as well. Do we have anything left? So, we'll take off the consent agenda. We're going to take off approval of the minutes. We're going to take off approval of the budget schedule. And then, whatever is left is what will be on there for the consent agenda for purposes of a motion. So, does anybody want to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended? Tony? Sir, second? Kim? Any discussion on that? All in favor? Are there any opposed, abstentions? Okay. That comes back. So, we'll start with Tony, who pulled off the budget schedule.
Yes, the only change I want to make is that, just make it clear that we're approving that tonight, not receiving it for approval. So, the recommended change would just be to, that it would be approved as recommended by the Finance Committee.
I have a question as well on the same thing. On the meeting for Tuesday, April first, two thousand and twenty-five, it says board adoption of the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three budget. Okay. I think we meant the two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six budget. Okay. Because that would be an amendment to that as well. So, is there a motion to approve the budget? So, is there a motion to approve the, the budget schedule as amended? By Tony, third second. By Kim, again. Okay, you weren't fast enough, sir. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? All right, that passes. And then, Tim, wanted to pull off the approval of the minutes, so we can vote on that separately.
Yeah, but I can't move on it because it wasn't there, so.
No, I, I know. So, does somebody want to make a motion to approve the minutes?
Yeah.
Okay. This time you were fast enough. Sarah, second. Is there any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? Tim? Thank you, Jim. Okay, you're welcome. So, that motion passes. Thank you. Then we can go on to the second page, and is there any new business that needs to be brought up for the meeting? Okay, then we can move right on to the discussion items. We have a special motion on there for purposes of approving the resignation of Tim Bowen.
Yeah, so Mr. Bowen has, has been here for quite some time, and has made a significant impact on, what's that face?
I love Mr. Bowen.
You will be able to maybe discuss then, because I think that that would be really great. But, so he had, he's put in his, his paperwork to retire at the end of this school year, but I just, I didn't feel as though that belonged in the consent agenda, because I think that the work that he's done specifically with really helping to support our students know and understand the importance of connections to veterans, and to, you know, I think we've heard presentations from the students that he's brought, the experiences that they were able to have, the people that they've been able to meet, as well as the impact that they've been able to have on the organizations that he has spearheaded. So, I just wanted to take the opportunity to publicly thank him on behalf of the school, and to, I tried to talk him out of it, didn't work, but just, I just wanted to say a few words about him before we, we went to vote on that.
Do you want to add, since you said you loved me?
Sure, I guess.
What was your experience? That would, that would be good.
I had a sophomore year for U.S. history, and I loved him as a teacher. He, he was very good at, like, getting us to go on, like, the field trips and, like, actually, like, engage with the class instead of just, like, doing work for the class, and he, I don't know, he just, he was a great teacher, and I only had him once, but I still loved to catch up with him.
Oh, great, great.
So, yeah. Crazy. I love Mr. Bowen, this is so sad. I went on the New York City trip twice, actually. That was, like, a really rare experience. I went on the trip to the, is it Rockville, the Veteran Center, Center? Yeah, I went there as well. I just think he, I had him for sophomore year for current events. I just think he's, like, genuinely such a great teacher, and also such a great person, and it's so sad, I can't, I can't believe that.
I can't believe it.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, I never had Mr. Bowen, but, but.
So, do you have hearsay knowledge?
No, no, because even though I wasn't his student, he still took time to say hi to me in the hall, and he knew every student, every student knew him. He's an amazing person, incredible teacher, and it's people like him that make E.O. Smith the kind of school that it is. And sad to see him retiring, but also happy for him. But, yeah, he's just an amazing guy.
So, would you rather make a motion if we don't approve this?
I'm almost ready to vote against it, but it's just, you know, he wants to retire, so he's a great guy, though. Great guy.
Do you want to say something about E.O.?
Oh, well, I just, I have him right now. I'll see him tomorrow for current events, but I just think he's such a great guy. I am a very, an amazing teacher. He really cares about his students and their development, and how they understand, like, not only, like, well, I have for current events, and so he, like, speaks a lot about, like, the voting situation right now, but he really cares about people understanding how, how our country, in his perspective, was built by, by the citizens as a whole. And he has, like, a very, like, he's very passionate about it, and I just, somehow he just knows everyone, so he's a, I just know he's, from that, I just know he's a very lovable guy, and I'm sure that he's made an impact on there, and I'm just so sad to see him go.
Anybody else? So, we do have.
I've never had him.
So, we do, does somebody want to make a motion to approve? Nobody does. Second by Sarah, thank you. Is there any further discussion on this motion to approve his resignation? Here, remember, I can, you, what?
Retirement. Yeah, it should say retirement.
His retirement, yeah, yeah. Here, remember, I can put that to a vote, all in favor. Any opposed, abstentions? Okay, that one passes. We have another discussion item. This one you can go and meet for. I'm the one that wanted this to come up tonight as a full discussion item for the board. The Policy Committee and the administration have been going over the grading policy, and this is kind of a first since the time I've been on the board, where they, they've reached a point where they're at an impasse, they have certain things that they feel fairly passionate about as to what they think should happen, and so what I decided was, this is something that maybe the whole board should decide upon. It takes pressure off of both sides in terms of, no matter which way the board decides, somebody's not going to like it, and we're going to hear about it. But at the end of the day, it's the board's responsibility, and it doesn't put the onus on either the administration or the Policy Committee. So, I've asked both the administration and the Policy Committee to just prepare a concise discussion for us tonight, so we have some sense of what's been going on. And I can start with whomever wants to go first.
Can I just clarify?
Yeah.
So, I think it's, it's more that the, the shift, so the, the Policy Committee made a motion to, to make allowable a drop in the lowest grade, which is fine. The challenge is that it, as much as the, the grading pilot had some consistencies, they were, they were, it wasn't a change in the policy. So, there were some things that we were aligning to try, or clarification to try and make there be more consistency, but there wasn't really a shift to the actual policy, whereas this particular shift is clearly prohibited in the current policy that we have.
It's attached to the board package.
Right, so I think that was, was the concern, the timing of it, and I know that there were, you know, we had many, many discussions about the yes and the no, and, you know, we could have disagreements or, you know, differences of opinions all day long. Ultimately, the Policy Committee made a decision, and so in order to move forward, you know, our concerns, just to keep it as concise as possible, my concerns were more in alignment with maintaining consistency with the grades that we're going to have to be reporting on. So, we had, you know, significant changes that were made in some of the practices for some teachers, not all, but trying to be more coherent and consistent across classrooms and across our practices, so that when I present grading data to you, and we're looking at the impact of intervention on the grading, that the idea of what that grade means is more consistent than it was prior because of what the grading policy pilot and the policy subcommittee has put in place. So, the timing of it seemed to contradict that focus on, let's be as consistent as we can in our practices, and we saw that as being entering, you know, I saw that as being another variable entered into the mix, not necessarily with the same process that we used for some of the other pieces. So, and the fact that it's a shift to the actual policy, and so I think that, that's where the board comes into play as well, when we're actually making a physical shift to the policy as opposed to making a change that's more of a regulation, which is, is what the other components of the grading and reporting pilot actually contain. Those are more regulations and clarification of language from the policy that's actually in place. So, regardless of how it goes, you know, as to what the, the board decides, we're good either way with how it moves forward. My concern was, again, just, you know, consistency moving forward if we're entering another variable into the mix that could make grading from classroom to classroom less consistent rather than more consistent, but that was a concern.
Basically, it's the introduction of inconsistency into a consistent policy, basically, is what it comes down to.
Well, it's, it's the change to a policy that would be actually more appropriate, right? And, but the concerns were with the consistency of the practices across classrooms. So, dropping the lowest grade without parameters on what and how, from class to class, and from teacher to teacher, kind of put teachers in a tough spot, because if some, some teachers decide to utilize that option, if it's permissible, and some teachers are dropping the lowest grade, and some teachers are not, that creates inconsistency in what that grade actually represents. And as the reporter of those grades to, you know, at the presentation that we're going to be providing, it just scientifically to me through in a variable that is moving in the opposite direction of consistency.
You have another presentation on top of that?
That's it. That's all I got.
So, I, I didn't know, because I was just making sure, and then I'll turn it over to Kim.
Okay. So, to address the changes in the policy, so there, there's a couple things. You guys have seen the original policy and then the pilot, but we changed, like, right here, it says that we do not allow extra credit, drop the lowest grade, rounding, or curving are not permitted, and that's part of our original policy. We have now allowed in the pilot extra credit, but it's called enrichment, and we're allowing rounding. So, those are two things that we have put in. In addition, the Policy Committee sees that the changes that we have made, some you'll see in the pilot are changes directly from the original policy, some are a result of practices that evolved from COVID, such as, you know, the lack of deadlines. Now, we're saying we want deadlines. And then the other changes that you'll see in the pilot are specific to reassessment that also are not in the original policy, and those are things around, you must do a, an intervention, it must be within the five days. So, the Policy Committee felt that adding in, dropping the lowest grade was consistent with other changes that we made, that this was actually not any different than anything else. As far as the timeframe goes, the history of that is, there was many, many discussions about this. We did have a conversation in June, we, we put it together, and in July, it was brought to my attention that this was overlooked, that this, this one thing did not get in to the pilot policy as intended by the Policy Committee. So, I reached out to Sharon and said, hey, is this something that we can change before it goes out to the teachers? Could we do this at the August meeting? And that was the intention to do. We had verbal consensus, but it did not move forward, and then we were told, okay, let's, we'll, we'll agree, we'll agree whatever the Policy Committee agrees on. So, we decided to then take a vote, so it was visual, okay, we are all agreeing to move this in. So, that's, those are those two points that I just want to make regarding how it came to be that we want it in there, and the timeframe of it. But I'm just going to read to you guys real quick the history, I'm trying to be super concise, I timed myself, so it's under two minutes, so that those of you who are not in policy understand a lot of the nuances and why we wanted to do this. Okay, so, the practice of the lowest grade is meant to capture and remove anonymous and outlined grades. It can be used to remove grades that do not reflect a student's usual performance. This is a do-no-harm grading practice. There are multiple new practices that both teachers and students will be adapting to with the pilot program, and it's important to us as a committee that the ideas that we are trialing do not have a negative impact on the transcript of our students. And we acknowledge that in the perfect implementation of mastery learning, there may not be a need for this. That would mean that all formatives perfectly align with the summatives, there is timely feedback and intervention before reassessment, and that the reassessment is done within the time constraints of the new pilot policy. And there are a lot of things that must line up without any glitches to make this effective and line up with mastery. However, life happens, sickness, issues at home, anxiety, things that impede a student's ability to successfully reassess, or a teacher's ability to teach, and that's just the reality of life. There are students also with FIBO four and IEP plans to consider as well. As a committee, we are looking at this as a way to give grace to both teachers and students, and provide a safety net while they are adapting to all the changes in the pilot program. And I would also like to note that there is support amongst teachers, students, and parents for dropping the lowest grade, as shown in the data collected in the focus groups, and those are our stakeholders, and we wanted their opinions, we reached out to them, and that was their feedback. So, our plan was to give this to the departments and let them decide how they wanted to create a way to consistently implement it. And the Policy Committee views this pilot program as a way to trial various practices, and the goal is to see what works and what doesn't work. So, we're looking for both positive and negative impacts on student outcomes, and then we'll use all this data that we're collecting to create the new policy. So, that's kind, that's the summary of the conversations around dropping the lowest grade and why the Policy Committee wanted to move that forward.
Can I just clarify the time then? Yeah. So, because I, I'm, I'm just, I, I need clarification on it. So, we did have a ton of meetings, and in June, we met.
Yeah, and that's when we made, after this.
We met after. We met in June, before it went out to teachers. So, we met in June and went through the policy, the grading policy pilot, you and I did, and then that went out to teachers before they left.
We did that over email. We, we, yeah, we did.
Okay.
Yeah.
We loved it. Yeah.
When we were doing, yeah. I mean, I, I thought about filling dates, but I didn't want to go there. I mean, I, I have a bunch of dates, and I just, I don't want to go there.
So, my, the concern was, I just, just for clarification, so the, the point was, though, that we needed to have this document out to teachers before the end of the school year.
Correct.
So, the July meeting, at our July meeting, where the pilot was shared with the board, at our, at our July meeting, we shared the pilot, grading information with the board. So, I'm just, I just want to clarify, you know, that there's no ill intent on the part of administration to usurp the process.
No, no, I'm just saying that we, we did. I'm just saying that we did try to get this into the pilot program before it went out to teachers, so that we wouldn't be here right now, is, is what I'm saying. We, we did meet, and in August, we said.
Right, we did have an August meeting.
Policy. Had an August meeting.
Policy had an August meeting, yes, but the board did not have an August meeting.
Correct, correct. Policy.
So, I would, I would say, I know that we've had lengthy conversation about the pilot, about this specifically. One of my concerns that I had was when we're releasing the pilot, and we're making these changes, especially with reassessment, is that I don't want students to be negatively impacted by the changes we, we make, and I think everyone agrees on that point. I think where we do disagree, and this is brought up, is how we go about doing that. So, in the pilot right now, it says grading expectations to be determined, be determined by academic departments. So, that could mean a multitude of different things. I personally think, and what the Policy Committee voted on, that one of those grading expectations, and as part of that, it should be allowed for the department to decide whether or not to drop the lowest grade. The issue right now is that our policies, the current policy, not the pilot, the policy specifically says you cannot do that. It also says that you can specifically not round, which the pilot says, hey, for this pilot, you can round. So, that was sort of my end of it. I know that we've had lengthy discussions on this, but I'm glad that it's at the board. Happy to answer any questions from anyone who wasn't in policy, but I also know on both sides, it's well-intentioned. We all want the same thing, it's just we have a little bit of a disagreement as to how to get to that.
Is it fair to say that? Is it fair to say that the big issue is whether or not to drop the lower grade, lowest grade? Is that really where the disagreement, or let's say, the impasse lies, is whether or not the lowest grade should be dropped?
Can I ask a question actually to add to that? Is the issue, is that the issue, or is, are you kind of agnostic to the specifics of the proposal? Would it be any kind of late addition to the pilot that's problematic?
Is that me?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, well, it happened after it rolled out to the teachers. I think there's, there are many levels of dropping the lowest grade and difference of opinions as far as what, you know, the rounding, the rounding piece is not every teacher rounding their individual grades. It's power school on the back end not letting an eighty-nine point five be an eighty-nine when that just mathematically makes sense. So it's not, I just want to clarify that that's not necessarily a change in the policy. Teachers still shouldn't be rounding grades. But at the back end of power school, that final grade that impacts their transcript should average the way, or round the way that we normally would round in math and not be punitive to kids by giving them that lower grade, which is what traditionally power school has been doing. So there's that piece. The enrichment piece is a practice that teachers employ regardless. And we wanted to make sure that teachers weren't saying, I can't give extra credit when they were actually doing enrichment activities anyway. So I think there's a difference of opinion as to whether or not we consider that to be a clarification of policy or a change to policy. The dropping the lowest grade piece is, it either is dropping the lowest grade or isn't. There's no wiggle room there as far as is it, does it fit as policy or is it part of policy or is it not? So I think that that was, that was a little bit of the question. You know, the concerns about dropping the lowest grade in general is a consistency piece because it's, you know, it's starting late. It's then put into the departments where they're going to decide yes or no. Some departments may say yes, some departments may say no. So the experiences for kids are not guaranteed across classrooms and departments. So that, that's a main concern.
I have a question, but why would it be introduced that way where it's up to the departments? That I don't understand why, either you drop it or you don't, and it shouldn't be.
And that was, that was a conversation that we briefly had, that should we just say all, let's, while we're doing this trial period, allow all teachers to drop the lowest grade, and then they can decide, is that, you know, is that a formative? You know, in what area would they want to do that? Because we don't have their grading books, we don't know. So that's where the teacher or the classes can make the decision. But on the other side, almost all of this stuff is then department-driven. So on our side, we said, let the departments decide for that consistency of the pilot. But there was conversation saying, sure, just say everyone drop the lowest grade. But that's, that's where things have.
Okay, just a quick thing to sort of clarify things. Would it be helpful if, I do think the departments have to decide things, but to say that we are not talking about a big piece of work that measures mastery of the concepts, like if this is not test, unit test, or, you know, big pieces of work? Would that be helpful?
That, so that's one of the inconsistencies. So there was no real, this wasn't considered to be a mandate, it was considered to be permissive, if I'm understanding correctly. So this was not, so it was now being allowed to be permissive. So if it's permissive by teacher, that's a lot of inconsistency that could possibly play a role.
You rein it in like that?
So if you rein it, so being more specific, I believe the way we left it as a committee was, we were going to go departmentally, the departments would decide yes or no for dropping the lowest grade. And if they were deciding to drop the lowest grade, that's where they'd get into the details about is it a formative, is it a homework grade, is it a summative? There's a big difference between a formative assessment and a summative assessment and whether or not those can be dropped.
That's why we helped them.
And then when reassessment is put into, so reassessment is mandatory now. So that's one of those variables with reassessment being mandatory. Students who do poorly on an assessment have an opportunity to remediate, go to one of the interventions, and have an opportunity to show what they know. So that was, it seemed a conflict almost, dropping the lowest grade when those are opportunities, taking away some of the arguments around, you know, the grades when it's having an issue.
I'm just trying to negotiate, because, you know, we can come to something which is, I hear you. I agree with, you know, I taught master's, I definitely agree with that, I get it. I also hear former students that are a little closer to being a student here than I would see for quite a while. And I value that, and I think Cam does her research, and this is, we have an expert over here.
Absolutely.
And you have, and you have, you know, Arthur's pre dark soul himself, you know. And I think if we could come to something that we all agree on, because the last thing I want to see is just like, it becomes sort of a tug of war. Because I really believe to do it this way. And I think if there is that one piece that is uncomplicated, but you're not using this for a major test, or a major piece of mastery. And I'll be quiet because you've heard me, so go for it.
Yeah, I mean, partly blame me on this one because I think, so I made the motion, I was the one that motioned it in the policy, to say, all right, let's just vote on it. I think that came out of months and months of going back and forth of whether we agree on or disagree on it. There was no convincing, because it's just we have differences, and that's, that's good. That's why we're here, that's why we're talking about it. So I think at that moment, I was just like, all right, let's just vote on it, and we voted on it. And that's why I'm glad it's at the board, and I think we didn't necessarily have time to work through, okay, how is this specifically going to work other than it goes to departments? And I think that's where, like what Sarah was saying, it'd be good, you know, if there are board members not in policy committee that maybe have an opinion on, you know, should it be departments, or how can we narrow it down to, so that when we get the data back, it's not totally skewed like yours and mine. And then also just another point on the dropping lowest grade. Another thing, like in reassessment, is I don't want students who maybe needs reassessed on the last unit. They're into the, you know, say we're in unit one, they need to reassess on the first unit, and then all of a sudden, we get into unit two and, you know, they're focusing on reassessing the prior assignment. And I think even we might have narrowed it down to like, you have to reassess by the end of the unit. And so then the concern carries over, is like, if you're moving from one part of the unit to the next, to the next, you know, if you have, you know, four or five segments, segments of the unit, and you have, you know, part one, you're still trying to reassess on while you're trying to learn all this new material. I want to make sure there's some sort of mechanism to make sure students aren't stressing out about what happened weeks and weeks ago, and to make sure they're focused on the current assignment. And so for me, I think that dropping the lowest grade could be effective, and I'll stop there and stop talking.
And Nick brings up, Nick brings up really valid points, he does. I think, you know, and to address some of those valid points, I think you all heard from Melissa Tubbs at our last meeting or the one before, explaining the whole intervention piece, which, you know, that whole process has changed and become far more intricate and with data that it's updating daily. Students who are put into any of those academic study halls and the, I'm not going to say the word right because it's way too late in the day, but the electronic communication, we'll call it, because to say digital is going to throw me off today. The electronic communication that's happening between the student center and teachers in the student, in study halls, in subject-specific study halls, where those reassessments are happening, where the intervention that has to happen before they're allowed to reassess has to happen in a more timely manner. Is it perfect? No. We're working out the kinks, but there's a lot of moving parts right now. And so that was just a concern. It's, but, you know, the intervention piece, you know, the two big buckets of reassessment and all of the kind of guidelines and rules that are going along with reassessment, and the work on the part of teachers that has to go, that have to go into recommending kids for ASH, communicating to the student center what those students need to do when they're in that time, or are they recommending them for peer tutoring, or are they seeing them themselves? Because a lot of our teachers are, you know, doing extra credit and, or not extra credit, sorry, take that away, extra help with their students after class, during study halls themselves. So there's a lot of these moving parts, and so, you know, that was part of the concern as well.
So I'm on the policy committee, and I apologize to the policy committee because I missed a few of the meetings about this. There's a couple of things to say about this. And one is that in the current policy, non-performance-based changes to the grade, including rounding or not permitted, does not specify if it's a teacher or if it is the electronic area to put in the grades. So that doesn't make a difference. It's true if it's not allowed, there should be some kind of workaround in power schools, but it's being done in the pilot. The other thing in regards to the weightness of adding this, my compromise to all of this was to conference with the teachers after the November snapshot to see if this practice would be effective, if it would really be materially different to the students' grades, if it would make a massive difference to one or two kids. And that, that didn't, that was met with some, you know, thoughts that it was a good idea, but it never ended up materializing. And I think that what's getting lost in this entire argument is that this is a pilot. There is no better time to try these things than now, regardless of what the existing policy is, because quite frankly, with the existing policy, we could just vote to suspend it, if you really wanted to look at it that way. But if everyone going to try these things and trial these things, this is the time to do it, because maybe this doesn't work. Maybe it does make a massive difference and it affects students for one semester negatively or positively or over positively or anything like that. So then that's something that gets taken away because this isn't, this isn't the final grading policy. This is something to try. And I think that there's no reason not to try it now.
Are you saying to try it uniformly across the board, everybody does it? Or are you saying to try it with, you know, departmental discretion?
So this is where policy committee and I, the majority of policy committee and I disagree. I'm of the, of the thought that if this gets implemented, it gets implemented across the board. Just a little disagreement. Oh, okay.
No, I agree with you.
Because that was my, that was going to be my question. I was going to say, so if this is true, if we have a pilot, then are we selecting or are there certain departments that are agreeing to do the pilot only and not doing it across the board? You know, and trying it that way, or are you saying it has to be done by everybody?
I think we were trying to, I think we were trying to.
That's part of what you're talking about.
Yeah, I think we were trying to compromise. Yeah, and felt that if we left it to the department, that it was a compromise. But I also felt that if we had come to the decision that the policy committee had said, we want to do this, we want to try this, if we had just gotten to that point, we would have been able, you know, in August, we would have been able to have these conversations at policy and truly say, great, we've, we're moving forward with this. How do we want it to be implemented? And part of the problem is that we could never get to that, that point, even though policy said, yes, we want to. We couldn't get administration on board to have those conversations of the next step of how we would actually want to implement it. So we said, yep, let's just, briefly it was, okay, would be department. But I do, with hearing Jim, and I have said a couple of times, you know, maybe it's not a bad idea to just for the consistency, just say yes, everyone. But at the same time, the departments would have to make the decision on what piece could possibly, or could be dropped, you know? Is it, is it a quiz? Now in the point system, which I'm not as familiar with, is it a twenty-point item? Are teachers having a hundred points? I don't know some of those things, and that's where I think that where the teachers or the departments could make those nuanced decisions.
Yeah, well, I guess what I was grappling with, first of all, I guess maybe just to set, whether I'm hearing what I think you're saying, at this point in time as a pilot, where you came out last, or at least discussion-wise, was permitted, not required, and let the departments decide how to implement it? Or whether they want to.
Right, so, so that's, that's as far as we, as we got.
Okay.
However, we do agree that there should be some consistency with it, but we hadn't been able to have the conversations around what that looks like.
Yeah, to me, I think that departments have to be involved because there isn't, I mean, I mean, even in terms of consistency, because there isn't consistency the way math grades are done and English or social studies. I mean, I mean, I was, or math, you have quizzes all the time, you have lots of input.
Right.
Where I don't know how it works in other departments, but I'm thinking back a hundred years ago, but, you know, you might have two papers or three papers and a quiz or a test. And maybe they're not, they're not equivalences anywhere.
Right, and that's, and that's why, and that's why, this is exactly why the policy committee has a lot of very deep discussions, because there are a lot of nuances. It's not an easy task.
No, I was, well, I was actually, in the case, math now is different because the summatives matter, but the formatives, everything is replaced by the summative. So there are actually fewer grades.
Okay.
So, which is, but it's interesting, but then, social studies and English are fifty percent formative, fifteen percent summative. So there are some real differences, so.
Right.
You know, in some, to some degree, there's not a lot of consistency across because the departments, there's some consistency in principles.
Right.
But not in exactly how things are calculated. So, but I think to the point on the dropping the lowest grade, there could be parameters put around it. So it could be, it's permitted to drop the lowest grade if there's been an intervention and a reassessment and something else, right? So it doesn't have to be just, you know, a kid like just decides not to study and gets a two and you drop that lowest grade. There could be some expectation that the kid has to have an intervention and try again. And then if it doesn't work out and they're getting further and further behind and more and more stressed, and they're moving on to the next unit, maybe that's an instance where, yes, you can say, okay, we're going to drop this grade and move on in this one instance. But, so there's some parameters that you could put around it. It wouldn't just be like, we're going to drop the lowest grade and that's it.
Right.
And the department can develop those parameters.
Because I was thinking about the fact that if a student could say, I don't have to do this much because I have a free, I have a free semester.
But you can put some rules around it.
Yeah, I'm doing some other stuff.
So potentially, the wire making it mandatory with the implementations might be tuned by departments.
So.
So, you know, are you saying it would be uniform, but departments can determine what it will apply to? But that's where the department's intervention would come in, is they decide what applies to formative, it applies to summative. One of those can be dropped, is that what you want the departments to have a say? But is it, you know, again, it comes back to is it the intent to make it uniform or not? Or clearly wants it to be uniform, it's going to be adopted. But I still don't know where policy completely stands on this.
Well, we, we definitely feel that there's a lot of new things that are happening right now. There's a lot of limits, you know, our, our teachers putting their things in, you know, their feedbacks in five days, our students accessing reassessment. I mean, we've talked about the students that are accessing it through the referral. But that's not necessarily all of our students, because there's also a whole bunch of students that are reassessing but not going through the study halls. And that's probably actually the vast majority of our students, right? Are not, are not, are not going through intervention. Well, aren't going through the student center call now?
Yeah, the student set, oh, the student sets are coordinates on the work that go to the subject-specific study halls.
Right, but usually that, my understanding of that is that you're referred. But, but there are students that can still get a reassessment, and they haven't been referred.
Sure, they make arrangements with the teacher to take it after school or before school or with the teacher themselves or a study hall.
So not everyone's going through that, that process, but yet they're still trying to access reassessment. So not everyone's going through that, that process, but yet they're still trying to access reassessment.
Right, and some of them, and so they could, so they have multiple avenues to access reassessment, yes.
So maybe what needs to be decided is, do we drop the lowest grade or not? But that's the first step and that's something the board can decide. Are they willing to, that the policy, agree with the policy committee and determine that lowest grade can be dropped? And then there could be a follow-up, a second motion as to how those parameters are going to be determined. Are they going to be departmental? Are they going to be uniform? How, how is it going to be applied? Or you decide that you don't want to drop the lowest grade and keep things as they currently stand?
Can I modify that statement, Tim?
You can modify it because I'm just throwing it out.
What I, what I mean is, I, I think, I think the way to do this would be to get the board's opinion and hear the formal vote of the, essentially the idea of this. You know, are you in favor of this in some form? Which gives the policy committee the autonomy to form what that should be in this pilot. Kind of with the understanding that I don't, I don't think we're running wild with this, with this happening. But I, I don't think we would need a second vote until we would have plenty of chances to discuss how this would, you know, go out.
That's perfectly fine. I mean, you can even do it as a consensus if you don't want to take a formal vote on it, just to get a sense of what the board feels overall. And I mean, it, it seems to me that whatever the decision is, unless it's not to adopt dropping the lowest grade, then you're gonna have to work more on it to figure out exactly how it's gonna be applied and how it should be applied. You'll have to come back to the board for the policy recommendation and we go from there, but Tim, yeah.
I have two questions. One is in the discussions, what would be the timing of that, not dropping the lowest grade every week, right? So is it meant to be end of semester? Okay, so after all your reassessments or whatever, then it's all settled and done, okay? And the second thing is, we're talking about this in the context of a pilot, sounds like, right? What is the current sort of boundaries and timeframe of that pilot we're talking about?
So the pilot's currently implemented.
And for how long is it considered?
Throughout this, throughout this school year. It's gonna be, but we're collecting data three times. Data just went out. We're doing it again at the end of the semester and then in the beginning of next semester. I had, there's dates.
Yeah.
We gotta have, we have to start three of them.
On actual policy.
So two drop events between now and the end of the pilot?
Two what?
Two drop events?
Yes.
Yeah.
Potential drop events?
And the pilot started at the beginning of the school year, right?
Okay.
End of the semester, end of spring semester, is the way we're talking about. Dropping, dropping events would be at the end of this semester and the end of the spring semester, right?
I think we said the snapshot for the spring, it'd be a little too late. We have to, we have to be, well, I mean, not necessarily, because this pilot is in play until the end of the year. It's just when the data collection's gonna be happening.
Right.
So we could still look at the data even though the draft new policy will be in process.
Right.
Because we have to start that February to get it approved by May.
Work and decide to not make any decisions tonight, in which case it's more fun for policy and administration to go back and forth and figure out how this is all going to resolve. Or again, there can be a motion if somebody wants to make a motion or if you would prefer not to make a motion and, and go on a consensus, which you don't on a consensus basis just to see how people stand, at least for tonight. There's Nick.
I mean, I'd make a motion.
Are you making it or you, you would make?
I'll make a motion to, for the, for the board to vote on whether they would like the policy committee to bring a proposal on how we would go about dropping the lowest grade.
No, but I, if there's a second, then it will go to a vote. The only question that I would have.
Or I'll take friendly amendments too. Please.
Friendly amendments, that is.
Before, before there's a second, Sharon has a question.
I just, I want to ask a question because one is something that Arthur stated about conferencing after the snapshot to see if it would be effective or helpful. I feel like that, the time for that would be now. Since the snapshot, we just got the snapshot, the teachers are, just finished verifications and that information, we have that information now. So as far as being timely, that would be, I think, really helpful to hear from teachers around whether or not this move would make a difference, whether it would add more, you know, more work to them for the decision process. I, I just, I thought that that was a, a good suggestion. I think it would be helpful for us to know, you know, what, for the people who have to actually implement it boots on the ground, is it going to be helpful to knowing, you know, to, to the, you know, mental health wellness of their kids, but also to knowing what the kids know and are able to do in regards to the work that they've done during the semester or during the quarter.
So is, are you basically saying, no decision tonight one way or another, let's see what the data says and then go back to policy?
No, I would like a decision of some sort.
Okay, so, so I, I just, I appreciate that. I just don't feel like right now that we could, like, go out to teachers and then come back because we kind of said we'd do that, like, this has been like, you know, this, this going thing. I think we just need, the policy committee has very much said we want to allow dropping the lowest grade. So we've all, we've said it, you know, verbally, we've had consensus, we went to a vote. So we're really here tonight for the board to say, do you, do you guys, would you support us in allowing this for the pilot program? And if you do, then we can also, at our next meeting next week, we could put together the parameters for it. So that I, I feel like that's where, where we're at with this. I really don't want to see it, it keep moving because I, I, I don't think that that, I mean, we're November already. By the time we turn around, it's gonna be.
Christmas.
Yeah, you know, so then it'll, just would have been, and just never really happened, even though this is something that we've been voicing, that we've been wanting to do for.
Well, there hasn't been a second on Nick's motion. Do you want to amend your motion before it comes up?
I will suggest a friendly amendment to you and just add.
Just make a new motion, just scratch it.
No, your, your motion is fine, but the friendly amendment is dropping the lowest grade for the purpose of the, for the purpose of the pilot.
For the pilot, yes.
For the pilot, not, because your motion probably suggests it goes to the original policy.
Yes, for pilot.
That's a friendly amendment.
Very friendly.
Back to motion.
Very, very friendly, yes.
Could you repeat it again?
Sorry. Could you just sit there and say, because I don't want to.
That the Region 19 Board of Education essentially allow the policy committee to permit dropping the lowest grade as a practice for the purposes of the grading pilots, grading policy pilots.
Okay, and that would be with the understanding that it was seconded by Sarah. Wow, and Nick, you withdrew your motion, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so there was, it's a motion made by Arthur.
Does Tim have a question?
So I'm trying to go back to allow, right? I'm just turning my head around like. So we haven't settled this at all, right?
No.
Right, the, the question was whether you thought it allowable. I didn't think that's why we were here, but maybe, maybe I misunderstood. It's part of discussion, right? Discussion about the motion?
Yeah.
Yeah. So is that, is that what was needed, I guess is maybe my question? Is, is the board allowing, allowing the drop? We're not saying it's required, no, it's talking about how or what?
So maybe we do need to be specific. Do you want to say that it's for, for anybody?
Do you want a friendly amendment?
No, because this was, this motion was simply to gather the feed, essentially gather the feedback from the board to allow us to tune this policy. But the over, the overarching part of the policy or the motion is, for the purposes of the pilot, you're allowed to drop the lowest grade and then we fine tune that as it goes.
I get the sense that, that the, the obstacle was not whether, but how. We're not solving.
Not exactly.
No, no, I'm, I'm not sure I understand it completely, I've just.
Yeah, that's what I'm.
Is it, is, because I'm not sure we're helping, I guess. How are we helping?
So I guess the best way to clarify it is, so with, with the initial motion that was passed in subcommittee that would allow this, I was a vote in the negative. And the reason I was a vote negative is because of the way the motion had to come up. And I think that was a piece from the, of frustration from the policy committee that there was a lot of resistance to something that was supposed to be agreed upon in July, that the only way to get this moving was to put it through the motion. I don't agree with that, but it almost seemed like it was, they were forced to do it that way. And I say they only, and I'm a part of the policy committee, I say they because I wasn't there for some of those meetings. And I, I think, I, I don't like being at that point because I don't think, I, I'm not a believer in make a motion and we'll figure it out later. But unfortunately, that's kind of where we are, so.
And then, I guess.
Go ahead, Genesis.
Well, and then, because I, we had this whole discussion around setting parameters around dropping that lowest grade. So that's a part of what you're going to be doing in this, this pilot?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, I mean, if, if you guys, if you guys say that.
Trying to understand that.
That it's permissible for us to drop the lowest grade, then what I would understand from that, then our next steps as a policy committee is to decide, should it be universal, which I'm sensing maybe that for consistency, that's something you, you guys might want? So, or the parameters. And I just want to say, I don't think we ever in our conversations thought it would be something that like kids just don't do anything. I think we always thought it would be best put forward, doing the best they could try and not just, not show up, so.
I just have a quick comment. At first, I didn't like the whole idea, okay? But then, because I, I really hear that this could be a broom dart. It would just be, you know, really hard to, to try to get consistency. But the reason I want to pull it forward now and vote for it, is just do it. And if it's not, if it's not workable and we see it's a problem during the pilot, then it dies. That's it.
That's the point about this motion, if I understand it correctly. All we would be doing if we grant the, if we approve the motion would just be that you guys can drop for purposes of the pilot, you guys would have permission to modify the existing policy for purposes of dropping the lowest grade, then you have to figure out how you're gonna do it, right?
Exactly.
And you have to work with the administration to figure out how that's gonna happen. And that's again, assuming that Nick's motion is approved, I mean, Arthur's motion is approved because it's possible that it won't be, you know?
I'd say, I, jumping this really new, but I would be all for it if they had a prerequisite of the intervention and remediation. For me, like, that, that whole spirit of the remediation is like filling in these gaps. So you don't, you know, 10 years later, you're still have a hole there because you never learned it. So for me, that's, that's a huge thing, so, you know, making sure they did that, I think would help. And I would think it also would help the departments. So if they had that prerequisite, then it would kind of level the playing field where if you only have two tests, like for one class, you have two tests that are your grades, some are like 25, 25, 25. If you've already gone through the mediation process and you've done all this, you know, they've already, students already put in a big commitment for that. And then it kind of weights that, that class where I think it's easier for the department to say, okay, well, we can drop the lowest grade because this student has already like gone that, that extra mile. So I think when it comes to the departments, it would be easier for them to balance that out.
It might also implore teachers to have more formative assessments, which has been across the board in all of our surveys, you know, teacher, I mean, students and parents want more opportunities. So if they know lowest grade might be dropped, maybe it's not so encouraging to only have two grades in that. You know, maybe they'll say, well, let's have more formative grades then, let's have more quizzes, let's have more opportunity for reinforcement and feedback. So I think it, it could be beneficial for, for both.
I'll deny either get rid of this or we do it.
That's what the motion basically is, and you're only doing it for purposes of the pilot. So a full-fledged change in the policy is one of the purposes of the policy.
Yeah, we're still getting that, that, the policy change.
Right, yeah, it's not, it's not a full-fledged policy.
But that'd be part of the greater policy change.
Right, well, it could be.
It would now, oh, no, it would be, because either way, this is gonna be there or not, so either way, it would be a part of the.
Can I move the question?
You can't, you can't. So no more discussion. Genesis moved the question, so I can put it to a vote.
Can we, after all the discussion, read the motion again?
Yeah.
Okay.
Read the motion from memory.
I move that the Region 19 Board of Education permit the policy committee to allow the practice of dropping the lowest grade for the purposes of the grading pilot. I do like implement or permit. Yeah. Okay, then I will take the amendment to implement the practice instead of permit the practice.
Can you figure a different word, implement? That does not clear to me. Is it mandatory or is it permissible?
It would be, it would be mandatory, but the parameters of, of it would be subject to our next policy meeting essentially.
How about, how about to, to include in the pilot, dropping the lowest grade?
I like that better.
Yeah.
That's awesome.
Huh?
Call. Call lawyer.
Yeah, I like that better. Is that a friendly amendment?
Yes.
All right, but then who seconded your motion, Sarah? Was it you that seconded?
I think so, yes.
So you would have to approve that amendment and then Arthur would have to.
I, I, I.
All right, I'm still not sure if we landed.
Because.
So it would just be changed.
Just, just give me your wording. To include in the.
Include, to include the.
In the pilot.
Practice of dropping a lowest grade.
In the pilot.
Sorry, the whole thing, please.
The whole thing, okay.
Okay. That the Region 19 Board of Education permit the policy committee to include the practice of dropping a lowest grade in the confines of the grading pilot.
Permit it.
Yes, include. It was include.
Permit to include.
Permit to.
Permit to include.
Yes, right, yes.
Rather than just include.
That's what I wanted to hear, language. Is that what got written down? Those are different things. It was written down about eight different versions of this. Can you repeat what you wrote down?
Oh my goodness, exactly what was said.
They're very, very different things.
Permit to include the practice of dropping the lowest grade in the confines of the pilot. Is that right?
Agreed.
Yes, agreed.
All right, Genesis is calling a question, it's on number five. So I'm gonna put it to a vote, all in favor.
Hi.
Proposed, extensions. Okay, and that one passes.
I'm not sure what we got there, but.
I know, it helps.
We have some conversations on Wednesday.
Basically, it's down to either, they're gonna be allowed to go forward dropping lowest grade or not. And so we're giving them permission to basically go forward dropping lowest grade. They have to figure out the parameters with the administration as to how that moves.
And then the pilot will.
Implement the words you can. Yeah, we're.
Yeah, that, that's the big chunk of it.
But again, that's. You have to go through the.
Yeah.
You got it.
And now you're offering a little bit of a policy committee.
Yeah.
Yes.
Hopefully you're not recruiting any new people.
I know that, we're gonna move to Sarah. All right, so we're gonna move to Sarah. We have a discussion regarding the contract with the town of Union. And I think what you and I had talked about, you wanted us to give, you wanted to give you and I permission to go forward with negotiations and work out a contract with them?
Correct.
Okay, so we've already had a discussion tonight. Sharon's already brought up that the town of Union is interested in having us become a sending school for them. And so they're in the process of reviewing the contract that we now have with the town of Columbia. In order to move this forward a little bit more quickly, I would like, if somebody is willing to do this, a motion, a contentious motion that says that you would delegate to Sharon and myself the authority to move forward and negotiate on that contract so that we might have something to bring back together in December, you know, that all that last dumped in there. It's just permission for us to negotiate so it doesn't have to be a full board negotiation. So, okay, so it was moved by Genesis, seconded by Sarah. Is there any further discussion on that?
It's just, it's just a negotiation, but we end up seeing the final.
You, yes, absolutely, yeah, yeah. No, it's just so we can find a language, that's all.
Yeah, I just want to ask one question. When we gave them the Columbia contract, did we put those numbers in or?
So they have different numbers, so their numbers.
It's the contract.
Yeah, so they, yeah, so they're. Yeah, so they, yeah, so their, and their numbers, their numbers mirrored Eastford's numbers, which would, was similarly, it was similar to what they were asking for in the beginning was the permissive to send their kids to E O. So they.
So they would still have those, those costs, cost of living?
They would have the, the index. I want to call it the U D index.
With a minimum or something?
Yeah, it's, it's anywhere between one and four percent is the minimum maximum that that tuition rate will go up each year depending on the index.
So the number that's in their contract, something to that would be the number that would go be in effect for, if they keep signed on next year?
So the number, yes, but they'd have to wait for that. So we don't get that index number until like December, in the middle of December, January, somewhere around there. So, but Eastford's number was where we started having that conversation was, you know, this is what Eastford's contract says. They would be similar in context to Eastford. So whatever this year's number is for Eastford would be there.
If their start, if their start.
Right, we would add the index to that, that one to four percent. And that's where their contract would start for the 25, 26 full year.
So Eastford and Union would be on the same, yeah, they would, they would, they would start. Where Eastford is today would be where, where Eastford will be next year where, where they'll start.
So it'd be consistency between.
Yeah, between, that's all I want, yeah.
Is contract structured just between annual renewal or what's this? No, the contract with Columbia, I think right now is a five-year contract.
Columbia is a 10-year contract.
Yeah, it's not subject to annual renewal.
But it does have an annual escalation.
Eastford is, is currently a three-year contract. We do those every three years. Those were in place before I got here.
But Eastford is a permissive as opposed to, you know, having a sending school.
I have a question about blessing in that. So.
So if we're their designated school, they will be responsible for providing blessing. We do have an agreement that when it's reasonable, that, you know, if they wanted to send one kid and they were willing to pay for that student, we've worked it out with Ashford Transportation, that they would have a pickup point in Ashford to support the district. So if we're the designated school and they're transporting all of their children here, they will have to secure their own transportation.
I just, general timeline on this and like when would we need to have a final decision by if this were to be implemented for next year?
So they're looking to move relatively quickly. So we would hope to have it on the December, January at the latest, but hopefully December.
So how many kids are they estimating?
For next year, there'd be eight that are currently enrolled. There are 10.
For which town are we talking?
For Union. There are 10 students who could be in eighth grade to our, to our home school.
Eight of 10 would come here.
Eight of 10 would come here, maybe if they, you know.
Eastford's a little bigger.
Eastford's, Eastford's a little bigger.
Like double that or?
Um, between, I think, 15, 10 to 15, somewhere around there. But we already have a contract with them, so they can send as many kids as wanted to come here right now. It's just word out they're designated, they're specific designated school.
That's exactly the way we start off with Columbia. Is there any other discussion on this? And I can put that particular motion to a vote in favor. Are there any opposed, abstentions? Or that one passes as well? Then the last discussion item was reference six, the changes to the new board member training.
Yeah, there's statutory changes to new board members receiving training. And so I think I put in here the, yeah, there's a little reference flyer that actually has websites that you could go to to sign up for some current trainings. But it's kind of timely that this is coming into play. We've had some new board members join. No formal really trainings were provided. I don't know what kind of training folks had prior to. I know the time that I've been here, there hasn't been any formal trainings. So we don't really, we have some association with CAVE, but we're not directly connected to CAVE.
I remember when I started on the board, we were sent to one of the CAVE trainings and orientations, yeah. Which was very helpful, I really, I thought that it was a great idea.
So I've arranged for, for someone from CAVE to come and do like a one-hour refresher for us and a kind of an introductory for any of the new folks. So they threw out the date of December 11th. Checked our calendars. If it doesn't work for folks, we can go back and set another time. We tried to get them to come to the retreat. Get them in on Saturday, that's how that goes. Didn't work out.
So that's a Wednesday.
It's a Wednesday.
What time is it?
It's six o'clock.
I'm just looking at, would probably be.
Would be a one hour, December 11th, six o'clock.
That's probably when we would have our next policy meeting, some of the new folks.
Yeah, just on the. Okay, so we all come Wednesday, the 11th. I'll send an invite to everyone if it's, if yours counts.
The agenda for that is an intro to what they are offering?
It's just an introduction like to.
Or is it the training itself? What do you call it? But that, that event is the training itself?
Yep. But folks could also, I mean, there's a multitude of other trainings, free trainings that they're providing to boards that are in the packet that I sent. But this would be kind of the level-setting introductory.
That would be the statutory.
Yeah, other than going to one of those all-day things. Different life records you use.
I will say the other thing that was really helpful to me was that years ago too, with the finance committee, we had orientation around the budget and how the budget was put together and presented. And that was very helpful too. And it was usually done by the finance director. So I don't know that Amanda has done that in the past, but it was, you know, other folks.
Just, would you like one?
Well, I think it would be great because I think it would be great for anybody who's probably on the committee or anybody who wants to attend, but it's helpful.
So this, this one on the 11th, would you think that we would all get a take from it?
Yes, that would be good.
That's my answer.
Yeah, that was needed.
A refresher for those of us who've been on the board for a while and, and introduction for those that haven't. It's not a bad thing to go through. Somewhere in my, I know I have the seven art books, yeah, I know I, from when I went through CAVE years ago. But it's somewhere in the app and I don't know where. The next thing on there would be, we have an opportunity for the public to speak. Does anybody want to address the board at this point in time? Then our last thing before we adjourn would be whether or not anybody would have, any of the board members have a comment or a question to address the board. Okay, then I can entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved by Nick. Seconded by Janice.